It started. Officially call the meeting to order for December ninth, twenty twenty one. Start off with the pledge of allegiance, flag is to my left. Pledge allegiance.
United States of America.
To the republic.
Which stands for nation, God, individualism, liberty, justice, law.
All right, just so everybody is aware, this meeting is being recorded. If anybody else is recording, please let us know. I'm gonna start with entertaining motion to approve the minutes of November eighteenth and meeting.
So moved.
Zero second.
Second.
All those in favor, Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Sheed is also a yes. We'll be on to the next item, warrants with Mrs. Cohen.
Every student approved the following warrants, school expense warrants on November eighteenth, twenty twenty one, four hundred and thirty six thousand, three hundred and sixty eight dollars and sixty nine cents. December first, twenty twenty one, one million, four hundred and sixty nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty one dollars and forty three cents. School payroll warrants, November eighteenth, twenty twenty one, one million, seventy six thousand, one hundred and fifty seven dollars and twenty three cents. And December second, twenty twenty one, one million, sixty thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and forty nine cents, which ended up in the public press.
Thank you, Mrs. Cohen. Next item is the student representative updates, Zoe and Malia.
Hi, um, so we're gonna start with the LGN. Um, they said that they have, uh, a few fun things going on at the LGN for the hall, uh, holidays. They'll be participating in Spirit Week, the week of December twentieth, um, designed for students and staff participation. Um, Monday, they each have like a different winter theme, so Monday is baby, it's cold outside, so you wear your favorite winter, uh, sweater, socks, or scarves. Tuesday is deck the hallways, they show off their best holiday bling. Uh, Wednesday is winter wonderland, so if you're hoping for snow, you wear white. Thursday is a long winter's nap, um, and you prepare for winter break in your best PJs. Additionally, classrooms are holding special events, um, like relating to Christmas, but just still learning. They're doing STEAM activities, challenge to build an elf trap. Uh, they'll be participating in math, reading, and writing around the Grinch. And they're going to be watching movies for Christmas, and Zoe's going to be doing the JCS.
Um, yeah, so for the JCS, they're also having a Spirit Week. Um, each third grade class is actually gonna be doing a caroling event for all the other classes. Uh, Little Lancers will be having the Polar Express visit, and Kether One will also be doing the same thing. And as a celebration of what makes them all uniquely special within the community, the EL students have posted a giant display of their family heritage, and one of the Spirit Days will be wear your favorite holiday. So it's kinda cool how they are incorporating all different sorts of, um, cultures and all of that. Um, they're also excited to announce that they were super excited to receive the grant, um, to design the sea creature filled, ocean themed, a hundred foot long mural across the whole cafeteria. So they're excited to see how that'll come out, and they have a local artist coming in to work with the students and staffs to do that. So I'm excited to see how that will be. Um, Malia's gonna talk about the Yell and what they're doing.
So next week and the final week before vacation are also holiday spirit days for the Yell. Um, they're going to be asked to wear crazy socks, crazy hair, um, dress up as superheroes or holiday characters, their homeroom color, kinda like the high school OODU class colors too. Um, and just yell spirit day, just name a few of them. Uh, they have a trait of the month, and this month it is integrity, and so students are being asked to point out what great actions they're doing for integrity. Um, they can be selected to win prizes in the main office raffle each day, the more, um, you know, activities they participate in, which is really cute. And they have the chance to try and fill up their bucket for their traits for each month. And, um, so the students are rewarded when they do that. Um, and Zoe's gonna take on the high school.
Yep, so lots of things going on at the high school. Sport, winter sports have just started, first games this weekend, so a lot of people are excited to see that. Um, but the also, the band and chorus winter concert is coming up on December sixteenth at six. And we also had lots of fundraisers going on around school for different, um, clubs and activities. So Student Council did the Santa fund drive for donations, and we raised almost seven hundred dollars for the Adderboro Council for Chris, for Children's Christmas is for cho- for kids charity, charity, sorry. And then, um, for math honor society, we had a, uh, toy drive at the Yell um, this past weekend, and it was with the Norton Police Department and the C two Foundation, and that was a really good success, even though it was pretty cold outside. Um, the National Art Owner Society sold over two hundred snowmen ornaments as a fundraiser also. And the National Business Honor Society are coming out nice and strong with the brand new honor society, but they just sold raffle tickets for holiday gift baskets. So lots been going on. Um, I think since this is the last one, just for this year, we just did kind of like a holiday update, what's kinda going on. But we'll definitely try to do some new, um, kinda student opinions on different things, just not much has been happening to ask what's been going on. I don't have any live streaming to complain about anymore, so, um, we'll see what happens next year. And what we can get from the students in different schools, but unless Malia has anything else, I think I'm good.
Yeah, I think we're all set, thank you guys.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, girls.
Thanks, girls. All right, uh, the next item on our agenda is a presentation on the Need Association grants. Come on up, come on up.
Hi. Hi, I'm Sandy Butchery, part of Need. Um, hello and thank you for having us here tonight. We are, um, Norton Bracing Educational Development for Need. A volunteer nonprofit organization, fundraising throughout the year to enhance curriculum and support teachers in Norton by providing a nature, uh, teacher grant program. Since, uh, Need began, we had the honor of giving over a hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars to teachers and staff to the Norton Public Schools. This year alone, we were able to grant nine thousand, five hundred and fifty two dollars and twenty six cents to help, um, fund nine exciting grants at the NHS curriculum for our students. Uh, this year, we're excited to have some of the teachers here in the room to speak while they grant. And I'd love to have them, to invite them up to join us. And, uh, maybe state your name, where you teach, and what your grant is all about.
Okay, first, um, I'm Suzie Hampton. I teach at the HMI Yell School, and I also teach at the LGN School. I received a grant this year, we're working on enforcing and trying to up our STEAM program. It used to be technology, but at the elementary level, we changed it to STEAM programs, and this is our first year working with STEAM. And I wrote a grant for a Lego, um, essentials kit, or twelve kits, so they are little boxes of, um, there's a little software that goes with it, and motors where they can do a challenge and make something move, so it's all, um, integrated into the curriculum and science, yeah, I should say. So I haven't gotten them yet, I'm really excited to see them, I could talk more about them, but Hap and I look forward to telling you more about them again this year.
We'll bring you back.
Yeah, bring you back.
So are many kids, are many kids able to use the same Legos? Or is it just specific kids that are in the group that are using them?
So we have a way to like clean them with the, um,
Oh no, I'm not, I'm just wondering if it's open to like all kids, or how does that work?
So we're gonna just do it for the fifth graders here. Um, we would have to get an additional grant for the lower elementary grade, so try it.
Yeah, so all fourth and fifth graders will be exposed to it to be able to try it? Okay, that's what I'm saying, yeah, awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Amanda Kendall, and I teach kindergarten, uh, she's, uh, I'm a little bit, Amanda, we're, um, Kendra running, Megan Doran. So as a kindergarten team, we applied for a STEM grant also. Um, within the grant, we applied for materials that can be used in STEM related fine motor bins. And we can also use them for hands-on activities and experiments. And we also requested B-Box, which introduced students to basic programming. Um, and they can be also integrated into math and literacy instruction. And we wanted to go with STEM because we've been doing a lot more STEM related activities in the classroom, and they seem to be particularly motivating and engaging for our students. Um, they allow for more exploration and also communication. We've been putting them in groups more, and they've been really having to communicate and figure things out together and, um, just cooperate with each other, which is really nice, so we're very excited. It's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jessica Holker, I teach here at the middle school, um, I teach in our language-based program. Um, so my grant is for whiteboard desks for my classroom. Um, so this, it's a specialized program, it's a smaller classroom, so I applied for eight, um, whiteboard desks that my students can use. I primarily teach math to the program. So the whiteboard desks, we, we're using whiteboards just all the time in math. It gives kids space to work on, and they just somehow like it better than pencil and paper. Um, so the whiteboard desks will just be more space, less materials. Uh, and I'm excited because they're better than our regular, better for my students than our regular desks, because it makes it so easy for them to use our flexible seating options that we already have. So the desks themselves, I think, are going to be great, and then the fact that they have a whiteboard on top of them is amazing. So I'm really excited to get them, try to start using them.
I'm gonna be using them during negotiations, because you used your room.
I know you do, I know, it's definitely your own choice. Thank you.
We did utilize your flexible seating last week, it's very popular.
Hi, I'm Kim Bray, I teach French at the high school. Um, Joel Blesky, Heather Triani, and I together applied for a grant to purchase, uh, novels, bookmaking supplies, and shelving for books. Um, we'll be using these novels to increase literacy and proficiency in both the high school and the middle school French and Spanish students. Um, they'll be using, they'll have the opportunity to use these books for independent free choice reading, uh, for creating class stories, and it will allow us to expand our, our libraries. Uh, students in the middle school have already started creating stories that will go into book format once the supplies come in, and the high school students will have the opportunity to interact with novels of greater difficulty and variety than we have, uh, right now. So thank you very much for letting us start.
Hi, everybody. Dr. Marcus, Principal of our JCS. Uh, I'm excited that we, uh, received a grant from Need for, uh, a giant mural, as Zoe talked about. Hundred and six feet long, all across the cafeteria. Uh, that will celebrate our ocean game and celebrate the community. And I really wanna thank Need for, uh, their support, it's a wonderful organization, and very likely to have it. I've been in a few other places that don't have an organization like Need, and so I think Norton is a great place, and we're very likely to have it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jeanne McKee, and I'm the treasurer of Need, and I'm just gonna let you know about some of the grants for recipients who are new to come tonight. At the high school, Del Hall was granted a WiCon tablet that will enhance math curriculum and streamline the way she would teach, effectively utilizing technology to assist in projecting math on the board or more interactive experience with her students. This should be a pilot program, I think as well, if they're, if they do. At the middle school level, Megan Pistano was granted a wide array of flexible seating to help students in her special education classroom be more able to focus and concentrate. Also at the elementary level, Emily Ducharme was granted a variety of materials for multi-sensorium rooms at both the JCS and the LG More School that included games, flexible seating, tactile materials, and more. And we appreciate teachers who came, we appreciate your time. I also want to mention that Need came up with the ninety five hundred dollars for these grants, but it's really important to also note that ninety three hundred dollars in addition was given from a variety of sources, the Mass Cultural Council, the parent boards at the JCS, the LG, and the middle school as well, and, and the helping, and the Yell. So appreciate your support, and well, Need and others will do a lot further. We also wanna thank the town of Norton for their support of our fundraisers throughout the year. With our seniors closing drives, paying ends on driveway and around town, options in spring, and any other wacky fundraiser we come up with to support the success of those fundraisers that Need's granting, which is at many public schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you, um, to Mr. Chairman, uh, to Need, I mean, it's, it's kinda like just crazy how they do this.
Yeah.
It sounds like a health program, I mean, it's, you know, I appreciate the time and the effort for the fundraising, the work and the dedication to provide the money, and of course, to the staff, thank you for taking the time to go after it, to try to do something for our kids that maybe is a pilot on day one, and maybe eventually gives the fancy cards to the, the curriculum within the district, so thank you so much, appreciate it, happy holiday. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's great, you know, Norton, Norton needs a great program, I need, you know, the best thing is our teachers embrace it to think outside of the normal metrics, so I think that's the best part.
You're the best part.
Um, thank you for everybody for coming.
Thank you guys.
All right, our next agenda item is some cheerleaders are doing good and they wanna go take a trip to nationals. So Ms. Burkett and Ms. Morse, feel free to explain all this to us.
You guys should have come in like with the whole cheer going off, like show us something.
Can't pass up the opportunity to warm up.
You have to show us something.
They just came from Rogers, they should.
Oh, see, you girls are ready.
Um, yes, so, my name is Kimberhead, I am an English teacher at the high school, and I am the varsity head coach, and we just wrapped up. Um, I'm in my, my sixth year coaching and my seventh year teaching.
My name's Bailey Morse, I am a ninth grade wellness teacher at the high school. Um, this is my first year coaching children, um, love being back in the sport that I grew up with. Um, I'm so proud of athletes for how far they've come.
And behind me, just for, um, you know, to tug on some heartstrings here, I have eight, um, amazing high school student athletes who just finished the most successful season they've ever had, so they're here to support us. We have really quick slideshow, so quick, I can talk super fast. Um, so to recap our fall twenty twenty one season, we won the league, we won the tri-valley league for the first time, um, in TVL history, I believe the last time we won the league title was two thousand and two, and it was like so short. So first time in TVL history, we won, um, and then we moved on to regionals, we competed against all the division three teams in the south, we got third place, and we finished our season placing sixth in the state out of nineteen teams. Um, and just, yeah, top six in the state is very impressive, I think with the score that we had, we would have gotten fifteenth in the state, like just one year ago, so we are moving up. Um, and we also have a competitive JV team that did amazing, they competed four times this season, they absolutely scored so high compared to previous JV scores, um, and so we have a total of twenty-three girls in the program that we are really, really proud of. That was a screenshot from when we told them that they earned a nationals qualify score, because we did not expect it, we were a little sad, and then that's, uh, their authentic reaction to finding out they qualified. So objectives for, um, why we are asking for permission to go to this nationals trip, um, of course, it would be the first time, um, it helps strengthen and build the program, especially with our JV team making advances of their own, just setting a positive example, um, in goal for the underclassmen to strive, and then of course, puts Norton in a leader position, not only in the TVL, but also I think throughout the state, and just representing our school, our town. So the national competition details, it's actually an international championship, but I'm not sure with COVID how that works, but, um, it is an international championship, it takes place in Orlando, Florida. Um, it would be March eighteenth to the twenty-first, um, and, oh, and it's called a marriage year, and so I know there are other local towns in Massachusetts going, this seems to be, we had an option of a couple different ones to choose from. Um, but this seems to be the most popular competition among the Massachusetts teams. Um, and so the pricing right now, without any fundraising, just the basic cost would be seven hundred and fifty dollars, and that includes nearly everything aside from the flight and meals, so it would include registration, admission into all the competition venues, um, the party afterwards, transportation to and from the hotel, um, a three-day pass to Universal, and then the flight would be separate, that right now is looking like two hundred and twenty dollars, and then, um, once we get approval, we will hopefully be fundraising a lot to cover the costs for our athletes. The chaperones that would be attending would be myself, um, Ms. Morse, the assistant coach, and then another assistant coach, we have Jack with the M Shack. And then I listed our athletes, so we would be taking our fall team, our varsity team that earned their bid to nationals, however, at this time, I believe two athletes are not able to go, and so in that case, we would be, um, pulling up members from our winter varsity team to compete with us. So I think we're looking at twelve athletes and students total, and three chaperones. That may be.
Any other questions?
No, besides, I'm super proud of you girls, and that is awesome, I mean, going from last year to what, you know, your poor kids had to endure to this is phenomenal, you guys have a lot to be proud of, and we're super proud of you as well, and of our coaches as well. I mean, it takes a lot of effort, and it's just awesome, really happy for you girls, bring it home now.
So I, I do wanna share a story to the committee and Dr. Bieta, I, I emailed Ms. Burkett and Ms. Morse, 'cause a very good friend of mine has a daughter, um, that cheers for a neighboring district, my hometown. And she was super impressed by the squad, you ended up placing higher than them, but she felt the need to show me a text, and I felt me to say ha ha. Um, 'cause I, I've lived here longer than my hometown, so now I can say I'm, I'm from Norton. Um, so I think that's great that you're getting recognized by our competitors, as what Ms. Cohen said, it's, you know, it's, it's time to get to that next level. Um, so hopefully, you know, you girls can crush it at nationals as well, so.
So I think it's, I think it's really important for the committee to recognize, uh, the commitment that cheerleading is important. So, uh, and I'll, you know, correct me if I'm wrong.
I believe so, our juniors are, are, now.
Correct, you know, involved with other, other programs outside of MPS, but still, you know, the benefit of that, right? But these young ladies and their coaches are not only competing mostly on weekends, because that's how I get my information, but they're also supporting our Norton football program. So, you know, that's X number of games, then giving up a Saturday or Sunday, all of the practices that go with it, it's, it's a longer season than I think the public may think, which is Friday night football, and that's all that happens. It's not, it's beyond that, and, and thanks to these young ladies as coaches, and, and there's three of them if I remember correctly. Um, I'm gonna, um, suggest, um, that the chaperones, um, be paid for by Norton Public Schools um, solely for two reasons, number one, because they are employees of, of the district, um, number, number two, um, I wanna make sure that in terms of liability, um, that the liability of the coaches is that they are acting on behalf of Norton Public Schools. Um, and going out and supporting this, and we've done this before, um, in a, in a track situation place a few years ago, we, we try to do something to support the coaches only because, and I'd love to support all the students that pay for it, I really would. Um, but it's, it's, um, it's a way to make sure that all of those Xs and Ys around Kim and company being responsible for the activities, being responsible for the, the care of these young ladies while they're representing us, so I'll be working with that with the coaches, um, over the next, uh, few weeks as we, you guys prep all of your stuff. Um, and I'm supporting, um, the recommendation, uh, provided to you that, um, this team, uh, will travel and compete on behalf of going to high school and MPS, and, uh, just do well, have some fun, uh, if there's anything in today's world, as Mrs. Cohen said, coming from what we've been through and trying to get through it. Um, I think it's really important, so, uh, that's my recommendation to the rest of the committee, support, be able to stay traveled, which is required by law, like, hold on.
Just one more thing, if you ever need any extra practice, feel free to come to a hockey game and cheer on the hockey guys, we'd love it.
Listen, we, yeah, we've done that in the past, we can bring that back for sure, we have our first basketball game tomorrow night.
Yeah, our first game is Saturday night, I, because I grew up in Plymouth, and we always had cheerleaders for our hockey team, so.
We did my first year in the winter season, I came in strong, we did cheer at a couple hockey games, I think we can bring it back.
Yeah, well, I know, yeah.
Right, ladies?
There was, you guys are cheering.
Where else do you want us to go? Where do you want us to go? We'll go anywhere.
Don't make me bust into an old cheer, I'll do it.
Please don't, please don't. Let's take the committee, let's take the, all right. Um, so I will entertain a motion to approve the NHS cheer trip to nationals as it is.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Mrs. Stern?
Five, six, seven, eight, yes.
I sense a yawn, I like it.
I'm just gonna say yes.
Mrs. Stern.
Hundred percent, yeah, I can share it.
Ms. Sheed is also a yes, hundred percent. Good luck, girls.
Good luck, girls.
Oh, treat, uh, whenever you think a fat table is with the specifics.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Great, our next agenda item is announcement of the twenty twenty-two Adams Scholarship.
Thank you, um, so, um, earlier this morning, I actually cast out, um, the scholarship, uh, recipients, their letter that comes from the state that gives them, uh, semesters of tuition. Um, as you know, the John and Abigail Adams, um, scholarship program last year was a, basically you check in if you wanted to do it, you're not required to do it, as you will, like in other years, because of everything to do with the MCAS the last.
Does this seem a little light?
So this is typically your top twenty-five percent, if you will, that can go, you're usually are, are, are getting it, so usually have like a bunch of lines, so we are going to, just gonna remind you that we're also going to potentially see more names in the spring, um, of students who decide to do this, but, um, you have before you, as you know, the students who um, have two different options within the scores that they receive, um, in each of these, and really proud of these students who decided to take the first option and, um, and, and actually take the assessment, so I congratulated Michael Collins, Isabella Dumont, so Duran. Um, congratulations, Zoe, to join with us tonight, Henry Heck, Justin Lego, Justin Miranda, John Niall, Anne Catherine Powers, Jordan Robbins, Tristan, uh, Sabug, and Michael Whalen, so congratulations to all of them, and I provided them, um, their issues this morning, and a small, again, together, we'll do some fresh releases with them in the near future.
Who made these decisions, I know it's based on a criteria.
So it's, yeah. It, uh, it basically comes from the state.
The state.
Um, as a process of getting the proficient and exemplary on one each of the, um, assessments, uh, in the handout that you have, it's got a minimum score on the legacy, um, exams, which is the new, um, assessments. Um, so you get advanced or proficient, or you get an advanced and proficient. Um, with either combination of ULL math science or math science.
Do they take this as juniors or seniors?
Uh, they, they take the assessment as a, as a sophomore. Um, and as you know, the last, um, assessments, um, became an opt-in situation, so we have, we do have more students that are choosing to opt in to the, the, uh, the upcoming assessment. And they'll be able to get that, uh, I think these scholarships coming in at about seventeen hundred dollars. Um, or for here, nine hundred dollars for community college, so that's, you know, thirty-four hundred dollars a year, times four years. It's, it's a nice amount of money if you decide to go to one of the state institutions, uh, doesn't hurt.
Do we ever get any information if these are actually used by our students, or these, because it's the higher level, I assume they might go to your level school.
Yeah, so, no, it's, it's not, we actually, when you see the students that are, that we infer that they're using, because they go to UMass, they, we infer they go to, uh, UMass Boston, or UMass Amherst, or Bridgewater State, or any of the state institutions, or they go to the community college, is X number of dollars off, so. Uh, it, you know, we don't.
I always just wondered, 'cause I, I mean, I see some of our students going to these great universities where.
So what's, one of the things that's starting to happen, that I actually learned today from this pool of our coordinator at the high school, is that we are starting to see a list of private schools that will use that Abigail a- and give them something, not necessarily the full seventeen hundred, but give them um, something, and that list is, um, is provided for, um, as well, right on, on the site.
Great, so, any other questions? Our next agenda item is student dollar, and, and vote on new courses for NHS, Mr. Dollar.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, so we have five new courses to take a look at tonight, just to give you a sense of the process to this point. Um, is that teachers about a month ago, um, were provided with a proposal document, you see all of those proposal documents there in front of you, um, really just to kinda come up with a course description, um, talk about how it sort of addresses a need at the school, um, kinda lay out what the curriculum would essentially look like, uh, they would connect it to some of our priorities, um, like project-based learning or uh, workforce, uh, preparation, um, and then they would, uh, sort of, uh, give this to their department head to be signed. Um, we discussed these at our academic coordinator meetings, providing feedback, uh, to the group, and then also at site council, um, to be approved, uh, before coming, um, first to Dr. Bieta, and then, uh, here to you. Um, so it's been a long process for some of these courses, and, um, I think if I remember correctly, we go one at a time, um, through them, and, and we vote on each one, is that correct?
Well, you can vote as a vendor.
Okay.
Uh, just in a vote of addition, or unless the committee says they wanna go only these, uh, it's, um.
All right, so I'll, I'll kinda run through all of them to give you kinda the highlights, um, there's a, a great deal more information about each of these courses, uh, there as well. Uh, there as well. So the, uh, first one up there is a computer science, a full year exploring computer science course. Um, that would be very closely aligned, um, with the state frameworks, especially when counting as a mathematics course. Um, and this would actually kind of serve two purposes for us. One would be an alternate for senior year mathematics. So right now, uh, some students who, um, aren't interested in, in maybe the highest level maths of statistics and calculus. Um, would be taking a financial literacy course. This would be another option that's entirely project-based and based on computer science. Additionally, because it's a full-year course, um, you would eventually, once we bring in, uh, or do some other sort of background for, uh, potentially innovation pathways. Um, those are things that are, in order to get the state designation, um, we need for full-year courses. Um, that are going to be aligned, uh, basically for workforce preparation. Um, computer science often fits in either as a computer science on its own. Um, or potentially, um, in a, uh, machining or a, uh, manufacturing, uh, track as well. Um, so right now, the plan would offer it for mostly seniors or potentially juniors if they like to, as a full-year, uh, mathematics course. Um, and then, uh, down the line, um, to use it as a, a entryway to our computer science or manufacturing pathway. Once that's defined. Um, the second one, uh, is brought through our music department. We have two music, uh, electives brought up here. The first is an introduction to piano. So much like our introductory, uh, guitar class, this would be an opportunity, uh, for students to learn a new instrument. Um, there was a survey given at the beginning of the year, sort of asking students what they wanted to see out of their music department. And one of the things that was really identified was the ability to play piano. Um, so this would address that desire. Um, it would also be a, a situation similar to guitar. Where some students who have an aptitude are coming in and working on basically improving their skills. Um, so it would kind of be able to be tailored to whatever the skill level of the student would be. Um, this, i- in order to kind of make room for this, there would be a, basically a replacement of mu- and a music appreciation course. Um, which is currently an elective. Uh, the, a lot of the same, uh, curriculum ideas of understanding music, um, and also sort of appreciating. I'm, I'm gonna embarrass myself here as not a music scholar here, but, uh, doing things like, um, melody and, and those types of things would be built into this course. Um, so some of the music appreciation curriculum would be, um, brought into this, uh, class as well. Um, but it would still be a project performance-based class and focused on learning that skill of that instrument. Um, it does come with a budgetary cost we need to outweigh, um, in order to have the pianos for our students to do it. But, um, you know, pending that, um, we'd be able to offer this to our students. The second music, uh, elective here is Recording Arts Two. Um, and this is a continuation of our very popular Recording Arts. Um, elective that we have right now. So students who have taken this, um, and as you can see, they report sound for video games, some live streaming, radio broadcasts, things like podcasts. Um, they would be able to further develop this, um, and maybe even, uh, you know, really develop their own projects, uh, coming out of it. Um, it would be, the only prerequisite for it would who have taken, uh, Recording Arts Two, or sorry, Recording Arts One beforehand. Um, which is where students pick up a lot of the really important skills of recording. Um, having observed some of these classes, a lot of technical work with, uh, different types of microphones, and then obviously how to mix and overlay sounds. Um, so this would give students who have developed those basic skills in Recording Arts One, the ability to really, uh, delve deeply into it in Recording Arts Two. The, uh, fourth class that you have in there, um, is an introductory, uh, introduction to public speaking. Um, course that would be offered in our English department. So we used to have a public speaking course that was part of our senior seminars. Um, and that was something when we, uh, sort of took a look at those and brought them back to our, our English Four. Um, we eliminated that as an elective. There's still quite a bit of public speaking within the English curriculum, but this would bring it, or sort of pull it out. Uh, to a particular sort of discrete, um, semester elective. Uh, and the idea here obviously would be to provide a lot of coaching, um, and practice with this very important skill. It would be devised around sort of four key types of speeches to be given throughout the course of the semester, um, really building towards those and then delivering that speech. Um, it's something that, uh, we have, uh, two people on staff who have actually taught this both at the high school and also college level. Um, so it'd be something that, that they would be, uh, very adept at doing. It's something that we find is a, is a prerequisite in a lot of the state colleges. Um, in order to pass, uh, a, um, elective of, or not elective, because it's required, but, uh, to pass a public speaking course in order to continue in their education. Um, in those colleges here as well. So this would be great preparation for that. And then the last course is one other, uh, continuation of one of our popular electives. Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. Um, so the last one is, um, uh, Yoga Two course, um, Yoga and Mindfulness. So this, uh, is a continuation. We have a, um, Yoga and Mindfulness, uh, course right now. That's one of the semester wellness electives. Um, and this, uh, would be a continuation of that going into a lot deeper, uh, sort of understanding of yoga, uh, a lot more complexity. Uh, it would actually be taught. We might have some cross-teaching from, uh, one of our, uh, math teachers, Cara Eminin, who is a, um, very accomplished, uh, yoga instructor. Uh, so she would be building those skills for the students there. It would give the students who really enjoyed, um, and found, uh, a lot of value in that yoga course, the ability to. Um, to really go a lot deeper, um, into it here. Uh, and as you can see, um, if you take a look through the proposal, uh, once again, a lot more, uh, in-depth. Uh, different types of, uh, yoga, um, as well as a lot of the mindfulness that goes along with it. So those were the new courses here pro- proposed for, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three.
So we just see you, you got a couple of sequential situations, you know, bringing in the number two course of people. There's been success with number one. Now we can go even, even deeper. You've got. Um, not the startup, but really the continuation also of classes that are core classes as well that. Um, that really can count like, in this case, math or, 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 um, computer science, um, if you will. And then, um, the, um, interesting one, um, that, you know, one that actually has a significant cost, which would be the. The interest in piano, which is really the purchase of key, keyboards, if you will. And I can tell you right now, that's not a deal breaker, number one. Number two, as a former principal that started up, you know, intro to piano class, it's very, very popular. Um, kids are, are, are really into it and they also get to dive in deeper into the type of music that you can learn on a piano from classical to rock. Whatever. So, um, we're supporting these. I appreciate the work of all the staff, the academic coordinators, the staff who made recommendations in the high school administration. To bring it forward, that requires a vote of the committee.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's great. One that caught my attention was a computer science, not just because I work in tech, but math was by far my worst subject. So it would have been great to have an alternative. So I think that's, that's great for some of the students.
I, I agree. And I also want to say anything that Carrie brings up has always been a home run. So the fact that she, her name is on this means a lot. Um, the arts are something that we all, I think, are very, uh, wish we could have even more of. So that's certainly not a problem. Public speaking, if we've learned anything, with Zoom meetings and everything, public speaking is pretty important right now. And the yoga, I can't say. And I wish we had fifteen classes of yoga.
I think the other thing too, I may is, as you know, we're working on this kind of, um, career pathway concept, the innovation pathways. Uh, we're really, really looking at manufacturing and computer science areas. But the, the college career readiness, when we're looking at, uh, universities, colleges, taking credits at the school, which will get a date at the end of this meeting. You're looking at alternative education, because I had a meeting today about really taking a look at giving kids options for, or looking for that different pathway, if you will. And then the, the, the last one is the CTE, which is the career technical education. So having all that, so those are four major attack plans, if you will, that we have. District, and specifically at Norton High School, in order to provide those integratives and consideration at all time. But also when students are there, what do you want to do when you grow up? And let them dabble in things and not just worry about graduation plan.
Um, any other questions, comments?
It's all good. Happy to see it. More options for our students, the better.
Alright, completely agree. Uh, so entertain a motion to vote on the closed NHS courses for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Tefedeez, yes, as well. Thank you, Mr. Doll. Alright, next item on our agenda is a train update with Mr. Wells.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so we provided two documents for the update tonight. Um, the first one is a one-page, uh, financial reconciliation. Uh, we're just a little under halfway through the billable for the project. Uh, but what is really important to note on this reconciliation is that. Train was able to get all their purchase orders in early in the summer. Um, so we're looking, we're not seeing, uh, an issue at this point with any of the market corrections we've seen over the past five months where prices are just going up on building materials. So it's looking really great that they're going to be able to hold the financials, uh, right where it is. Uh, again, we still have a little bit to go through this, so, you know, things can pop up as we start taking. Equipment apart, but it's looking really good right now. Uh, the second item we provided for you is the timeline. Uh, the timeline is a list of the projects by school. Um, and it shows how, uh, how each one is gonna, uh, space over the time that we have over the next, uh, uh, nine months to a year. Um, with everything being completed, uh, it looks like close to the end of September. One thing to note on here is, uh, at the bottom of each of the listing is the solar. Uh, that seems to be the longest project item. And that's got a couple of reasons for it. Uh, one is the incentives and rebate, uh, applications take some time to put in. But second is we have to do an interconnection study, uh, with National Grid to make sure these substantial power plants can actually hook up to the grid and they won't cause a problem. So that takes a little bit more time to do that study, just to make sure that we're not gonna blow any of their equipment.
Matt, I just have kind of a, it's probably a stupid question, but on that spreadsheet where it says third and fourth quarter, then starts again, the third and fourth is of this year, correct? Twenty-twenty-one?
On the, um, the timeline?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's the, uh, third and, uh, first, second, third quarter of, uh. So, yeah, fourth quarter is twenty-twenty-one, and then the first quarter is first, second, third is of twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, so like for the carport stuff, like you said, we've already started some things.
Yeah.
You don't see it, you guys are doing stuff. Okay. I just want to be clear for the update to, uh, PBC on Monday.
Yeah, that's definitely, that's, that's the longest one. It just has a lot of paperwork associated with it and a lot of studies that have to be done to make sure we're not gonna blow anything on, on the National Grid side.
But, thank you.
And, and, uh, I think, Matt, it's important to say that, uh, that also comes with a charge to us. So they get the study, we get the charge.
Yeah. There, there is an interconnectivity charge. We're, we're working with National Grid to understand what this is and what we're getting out of it. Um, right now, one of the schools, uh, JCS is the only one we have the, the, the costing for. It's gonna be ninety-eight hundred to, to do the interconnection study. Um, we're trying to understand exactly what that is. I know it's, uh, it's, it's a study to see the protection requirements. Uh, relay settings and the feet of loads, uh, that'll happen on the grid. Uh, but we're hoping to have some conversations with them and, and kind of make them understand, you know, it's, this, this isn't a, a solar farm that's being hooked up. This is a public school. That's hooking up. So, you know, we, we found with other, uh, providers like Comcast, for example, we were able to have phone calls with them and make them understand that. They shouldn't be passing those costs along to the, the, the public school consumer. So we're hoping we can have those conversations with National Grid and, and, and have some success with that.
So just, that was the first I'd heard, I've heard of that. So National Grid is trying to charge us?
Yes, I, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Eight hundred, Matt?
Ninety-eight hundred for the JCS. I think that's the only one we have pricing for right now. So the other schools, we're gonna see what the pricing comes in on that. Um.
Matt, just, just, um, to, to, to clarify or to just get to the point that Matt said earlier, the key here is that. They're trying to safeguard their own equipment. I clearly get that, but this is not a solar farm, right? This is a, just a building, five of them, that are gonna have some solar, but it's not a farm. I mean, we're not even close to a solar farm. So, we're gonna, we're gonna cost, right. So we're gonna really push to see if we can get a better cost as a public institution, as a public, not, nonprofit institution, to be put on.
So, I, my other question, what, what parts of the schools are getting these, like, where are these solar ports going? Do we ever get like a plan?
Yeah, and in the original plan that was provided, you'll see that we have, um, we have zero rooftops. Um, we're going with the ports, um, because it just makes sense to us to not put more weight on our schools. Um, it's a safe that way, but really, it's just not something we, we want to do. So, um, if you think about the, uh, parking lot, like, like here, you're gonna be looking at this back parking lot, if I remember correctly, here at the middle school. That's the only area, if you're at the high school, you're in that student parking lot area, which I just drilled. If you're at the JCS, you're on the right-hand side, looking at the building on the left. Um, if you're at the Yell, you're in the front parking lot area. So the Yell is kind of to the left and it's right there with the parking lot. So it's, yeah, and then the Yell is, uh, behind, uh, no, the, uh, the Yell is the front area, parking area where the buses come in and so on and so forth. So. Um, it's not a lot, but it's enough solar energy to offset significant long-term costs. Um, and, and at least for twenty years, um, we're looking at some, some good savings. And that doesn't include. Other ideas that we have around solar, i.e. the potential down, down the road. Um, connection to something like the athletic complex, where now the lights are being turned on at potentially no cost. To anybody because you're utilizing the savings, uh, the energy that's collected, for example, during evening hours. Which is a, a small amount, but still happens. It's just the, the instruments that are used for that are costly right now. They're a cop more costly than they were.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're talking six figures. Somebody's gotta make money.
But we are on budget, though.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Alright, um. Last thing is other topics.
Mr. Chairman, I have, uh, two topics. Early College, um, Program, um, Parent Student Presentation is now set for January sixth at six-thirty. It will be soon because number one, not taking a chance with the weather and number two. And more and more dislocation with so more people coming. That presentation will be for current sophomores, current juniors, and we're gonna take a dabble on current seniors, if that may be one or two seniors who. Are participating in class. We're expecting the courses to come to us from UMass Dartmouth and the entire UMass system. Uh, we have an upcoming meeting. The consortium now consists of Attleboro High School, Avon High School. Brockton High School, East Bridgewater High School, Hanover High School, Holbrook High School, King Philip Regional High School. Norton High School, Centurion High School, and Tonne High School. Um, it hits about forty-six thousand pre-k to twelve students and approximately fourteen thousand high school students. Over time, currently that could potentially be involved. Remember, early college is about a cohort of high school students. It's not dual enrollment, where we're filling seats, which is also successful in some areas. Um, and we're also looking at the UMass Global. Uh, that is a brand-new online university that UMass just took over. Purchased from a private, um, online global institution, I believe, out west. Um, and, uh, just recently, Barney, me and the president, the commercial agent, just actually, sorry to make, keep your eye out for it. Boston Architectural College is on board. Um, they're a very specific course. They are a four-year institution. Um, and we now also will be soon announcing private colleges that want to offer classes, uh, as well.
Just refresh my memory. This is not dual enrollment. So this is courses they take on their own, like an after hours.
Yes.
They don't get like time off at school to do these. This is online classes.
Well, there's options that can happen. For example, you can create that time during the day where they have. Hopefully that time, exactly. Um, this also is going to need our own staff to support it after school hours. For example, the biology teacher will be compensated to work with students. By the words, providing our own staff. Opportunities to work with these students and be appropriately compensated, because sometimes these rumors start that, well, this is about cutting jobs or, you know, we're gonna lose. No, it's actually goes the other way. It actually is gonna require more staffing, not less staffing. Um, because we're gonna need a place for students to be. If you just send a kid home with an undergraduate class to do as a sophomore in high school. You gotta be really motivated. You need to have the students involved with other adults, um, not just the online, uh, opportunity. So. That's what we're working on. There's currently a hundred and three students enrolled in that program, none from Norton. Uh, because it was just so last minute for us. But, um, they're having, um, they've had some, um, uh, ghosting. I was told that's the phrase to use. Some kids who just kind of don't show up anymore. Um, but there's still less, like, seven or eight kids of the school districts that are doing it. And, uh, a quote from the professors is, this is a lot of fun. These kids really like, they like working with each other. They like meeting other kids from other high schools, even ones online. We're also working to do kind of college visits with that. The professors would like to see, for example, the lab take place on campus. Which would allow numerous kids from different institutions to come together. So, kind of exciting. It's slow. There's a lot of bureaucracy in this, as you can imagine. But, um, we're really, um, we're really, really, uh, pushing it. And all of those communities, all eleven of us have signed on to that. Which consists of the superintendents of school being kind of like a board of directors. And then each of us having our own building-level liaison, kind of is the contact. UMass Dartmouth's already committed a person in their office. To the eleven high schools, which is a good thing. And then one person to call, one person to get in.
So can other, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Can other high schools get involved, or is it just the?
So the consortium, the consortium already has a request from at least one other high school that's come in. Um, so, um, we are not here to stop it from happening, because it could be that that school brings in. X number of students that actually creates another. X number of students that actually creates another section or allows for the section to run, right? Cause we need, we have to have minimum numbers.
Okay.
You can't, if you have six kids who wanna take art and design, it's probably not gonna run with six. It's probably gonna be fifteen to five. So that, so the the numbers help. They don't hurt.
Can you, can you provide us like a list of classes?
Yeah, so we're waiting for that right now. So the some of the, so this term we've had, uh art, art and design was very popular. Um, that one was a Tuesday, Thursday, like two-thirty to four-thirty. Um, uh, the consortium also had an intro to political science, a biology and a um. And two, two different world languages, one of which we don't even own. So there's that opportunity as well as to, in that particular case, we offer Spanish. They were offering Spanish and Portuguese. Uh, so.
Teach it?
I did not teach it. No, my Portuguese has become more of a kitchen Portuguese over the years.
Can you just clarify before we change the subject? Um, so students that will be um sort of. Allowed to do this option are incoming or like for this year, it would be the incoming sophomores or the current sophomores?
It's the current sophomores, current juniors and current seniors for this coming semester and then for next year.
Potentially, they can take a course in the spring year?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we're really targeting, trying to give that option to our kids, recognizing that this is still very much a fluid situation. I.e., you know, our our kids wanna take a class and it's Tuesdays and Thursdays from two-thirty to four-thirty and they've got. The other things going on. They now may, they may not be able to take it this, so we're trying to be flexible with that. Um, but the idea is, we also know that um sometimes kids do a lot in the fall, listen to spring and vice versa.
Is this live instruction as well?
This is live instruction. Yeah, this is professor live with the students. Um, the classes are running on on average sixty to ninety minutes. Either three days a week or twice, twice a week. The art design, like I said, was like, I think it was hour forty-five minute blocks.
Yeah, it is sort of the prerequisite. Like, is this um, any students who wants to do this or is?
Yeah, so what we're trying to do is we're trying to find motivated students. Um, or students who may not be as motivated in their day-to-day, but this is something that interests them. So one of the things that the consortium is working on is. What what is the 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 lineup of what this should look like for students and parents? And and then one of the questions that's come up is, is there a fee, right? Because the credits, it's about a hundred and sixty dollars a a credit. And we think that there should be some type of an attached fee to a student or a buy-in, if you will. Um, but we don't think it should be something that keeps a student from being able to take it. So maybe fifty bucks, a hundred bucks, something that gives someone the buy-in.
Yeah, cause no fees, you get many kids that didn't show up.
Right, exactly.
They don't have.
Right, exactly. So, um, we have not put together a list of prerequisites. We've kind of let it go. Fluid. In one of the schools that's uh that has um over fifty students involved, um, it's one of our city schools, uh city high schools. Um, they've left it pretty open and they've had pretty significant success because the students are really looking to. Get credits done and transfer to UMass. And and those are total transfers. Those are transfer credits.
Will I accept, will the UMass system accept? Like, so if these credits are coming from Dartmouth, will Amherst and Boston, will they all, so they're very transferable?
Very transferable within the state university system. That's that's literally from the president's mouth to my ears. Um, and not only that. The the intention to this is, it's a proof that a child, a student who's seventeen, can do college work. Actually, maybe as young as fifty can do uh undergraduate introductory college uh classes.
Will guidance offer support to students? I sometimes think that um. Some students need a little invitation.
Yes, so one of the things.
How will it probably guidance be?
Yeah, so guidance will be, uh, if different guidance councils will have the responsibility, but you're gonna be seeing a plan of an infrastructure change. Um, in order to support the four pathway areas that we're talking about, because. It is, it is a lot of work to organize anything around these pathways, number one. Number two. We want someone who is not only the salesman for the programs, but is also backing it up. So that there is a counselor, but there's also someone else. There's also a potential teacher, as we talked about earlier. Uh, one of our own and not just a college professor. So, uh, yes, I I think the biggest issue is, uh, one of the things I'm finding. Recently is, we have been so inundated with technology as the. One way to communicate, right? We had COVID. The only way we were really communicating all the time was emails, 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 email. Yeah, I think a lot of people have stopped reading emails. Just based on some of the questions I get, you know, and so we have to try to find, um. You know, our communications office has to try to find a different way for us to try to get to that, um, different like little snippets of information. Hey, if interested in. Any of these, then here's your schedule instead of email, after email, after email. Cause that's what's happening. And as a parent, I can tell you that because I get those emails for sure.
Sadly, I think it's social media.
Yeah.
I think if you put something out, you know, on Facebook or Twitter, that people are scrolling and they see it and then they'll, they'll collect.
Yeah, so that's gonna be part of our attack plan with the the different pathways.
Well, it's tough to having, you know, personally having kids to schools. It's like, you know, it's a full-time job to read all the updates.
Correct, we agree. Uh, we're trying to figure out the technology way of linking that. Um, and we have, I have some thoughts on that, too. The second one, um, speaking of. Um, I would like to tonight, uh congratulate uh Karen, which is our director of instructional technology. She was uh selected as an award recipient for going above and beyond the program requirements for twenty-twenty-one, was a challenging year, of course. And um she uh has received uh a donation. Uh, to a nonprofit or an educational agency or institution she would like for, I think Karen said, right Karen, going to the technology department? I think is what she said. Um, for uh the donation, it comes in her name for two thousand five hundred dollars.
Wow, that's great, Karen.
Thank you, Karen, for um.
Congratulations.
For being part of the uh the uh Future Privacy Forum. Um, as she said to me a number of different times, he's incredible, incredibly competitive, so she wasn't just gonna let somebody else get the twenty-five hundred bucks.
I feel like we should have Karen in a picture with a like certificate or something. Yes. Oh, Karen, that's nice. You're the best. Thank you.
So, thank you, K W, for all of that. And uh last but not least, happy holidays, Merry Christmas and a happy year to all of our students as we move back.
Be well, everyone.
Anything else? Mrs. Stern, anything else?
No, I'm good.
Move, she's a jerk.
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All those big, Mrs. Stern?
Yes, please.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
It's not old.
Yes.
Mr. Sheed is a yes. Have a good night. Have a safe holiday. Thank you, everyone.
Bye, Captain.
Good night.